Okay, I have seven o'clock, so we can begin the meeting. We will be sort of completing and we post it after the meeting. Is there any disclosure of the community or the events? No, hearing none. We have no public hearings this evening, but we do have delegation. I don't, the L'Clash foothills strategy, so we have any belonging in the meeting.
So my name is David Blanche, I'm a public health nurse working in the Health Promotion Division Public Health Subway District, Espinola Office. I'm also the chairperson for the L'Clash foothills.
And my name's English Romley, and I am in the Mental Health Addiction Director with New York City Health Center in the new Espinola office. I represent my agency and am a voice for the indigenous population as the L'Clash foothills drug strategy committee. Today, we've been invited here to speak to you about the L'Clash foothills drug strategy. A committee of local agencies, organizations, and volunteers who are motivated to address substance misuse issues in the L'Clash foothills catchment area, which includes all of Sable, Spanish River, Baldwin, Narin, Espinola, Whitefish River, First Nation, and Sagamaka and Eschnoack. This committee was developed in 2013 and continues to meet on a monthly basis. Membership consists of a representative from Cambrian College, Espinola campus, Espinola Clinic Pharmacy, Espinola and Area Family Health Team, Espinola High School, Espinola Outpatient Addiction and Gambling Services, Espinola Regional Hospital and Health Center, Health Sciences North, Janeway Farmers' Choice, Manitouland Subway District Service Board, Massey Medical Clinic, New York City Health Center, Northeast Local Health Integration Network, Ontario Provincial Police, Public Health Subway and Districts, and Sagamaka and Eschnoack. You've already been provided a copy of the drug strategy and will be referring to this document throughout the presentation. So I'm going to start by providing you with a good history, sort of how the L'Clash foothills drug strategy came to be. So it starts in 2013. Public health was approached by members of the community who were requesting state injection supply. At this time, there were no supplies or there were no organizations offering these supplies in this community. And so individuals who are in need of these services were having to drive to Sudry. At this time, Public Health connected with other community organizations who we found out were also having community members come in with the same or similar requests at around the same time. So it was kind of a short period of time with a number of requests. And so this identified that there was a need for increased substance misuse programming in the L'Clash foothills catchment area. And that discussion was required among these agencies to determine the severity of the issue and kind of come up with a plan of how we could address these issues at the local level. So an initial meeting took place in November of 2013, and it consisted of partners from multiple sectors, including healthcare, education, social services, emergency services, mental health, among others, and all of these people came from either L'Clash, Manitouland, or Sudry, so they were experts in this area. During these initial discussions, it was evident that the L'Clash foothills was being faced with similar issues, substance misuse issues as other communities, both rural and urban, so not just the base cities. We were seeing it here as well. And we were also aware that communities in the Sudway region were starting to form committees to address these issues specifically. So this committee began to meet monthly and we developed a strategy. So I'm going to share a couple of statistics with you, and these are located on the one paper that we provided you. The 25% of students reported using L'Clash drugs at least once in the previous 12 months. Eight out of 10 people over 12 years of age drink alcohol, and of those people, two out of 10 are bitter. Been drinking has declined as high as five or more alcoholic beverages in one period of time. 87% of student users of opioid pain relievers report getting pills up. In 2013, the annual fees sees $300,000 worth of drugs. And the Sudway Action Center for Youth shared that approximately 7,000 clean needles were brought into this catchment area each month. So because of these statistics, the group developed a vision. So the vision is working together to improve the well-being of all people in the L'Clash foothills area by building respectful and educated communities, increasingly free of harms caused by substance use. And the group believes that four foundations need to exist within a community to help address the substance misuse issues. The first is education, which is promoting health by providing coordinated evidence-informed education, offering awareness-raising activities, and assisting with the development of local policies related to substance misuse and its impact on the community. Ensuring that our community has equitable access to a wide range of services to assist individuals at all levels of the spectrum, such as harm reduction, treatment, and recovery. The third foundation is strengthening community safety through collaboration and communication with our local league, the justice system, child welfare, probation, and parole. And lastly, it is essential to create, develop, and sustain partnerships between individuals, community organizations, and all levels of government based on mutual respect and the sharing of responsibility. So this is the basis for how the strategy plans to move forward to address these issues. And likely that all that information can be found on the document we provided you. So also our highlights are the accomplishments that the drug strategy has achieved thus far. In 2015, the drug strategy presented to the four municipal councils within this catchment area. The group was requesting municipal support to move forward with the strategy, and we did indeed receive unanimous support from each municipality. In 2017, the federal government was moving forward with their plans to legalize cannabis. The federal task force researching cannabis released a framework with recommendations to the federal and provincial governments on moving forward with developing legislation. The public was given an opportunity to comment and respond on this framework. And so as a committee, we reviewed the recommendations, identified some key areas of concern that would affect the residents directly from this community. And so we drafted a letter that was sent to the right honorable justice in Truro, commending the task force for some recommendations, one of them being an awareness campaign that they were encouraging the government to put forward. And then we also highlighted some of our concerns, and one of those concerns being the age of majority to purchase cannabis being 19. And we felt that that age should actually be 25 or less, more of a public health message because the brain still develops until the age of 25. And so heavy cannabis use up until, or prior to the age of 25 can have long-lasting effects. And then in 2018, members of the drug strategy committee were alerted by the public of a substance called purple heroin that was being publicly distributed and used widely in our community. As a result, we felt it was necessary to inform the public about this, and we issued a drug, what's called the drug alert. The drug alert provided information on purple heroin, which is heroin mixed with menthol or cartenthal. It also indicated the symptoms of overdose and information on how one can safely transition to use. This alert was widely shared via all media sources and quite widely through email and community partners, so we were able to get it out very rapidly and throughout the entire community. So as a result, the strategy now has a procedure to follow if any other information or another alert needs to be put out into the community in a very timely manner. So what is next for this committee? The committee feels that in order to develop a work plan and determine the next steps for the committee, more local data needs to be gathered. The committee has developed a survey that will launch soon and will assist the committee in gathering this data. The survey will consist of seven questions that will hopefully provide us with a better understanding of substances that are in our community, the services and supports that the public is aware of, and the gaps in programming and education that needs to be addressed. The survey will be available online and in paper copy by request for 10 months, and then the data will be analyzed and a report will be drafted. The committee hopes that the data from the survey will be useful in planning in 2020 and ahead. So as the chair of the drug strategy, we recognize that in order to make impactful change within our community, that strong partnerships need to be developed, and all ministries and sectors need to have a voice at the table. So I just want to share that your membership is always welcome, and should you want to learn more or just hear more about the committee, I'm always available to answer any questions or just to discuss further, and I just will leave some business cards should you want to get ahold of me. So I want to thank you for your time and for giving us the space to share a little bit about this committee and some of the really great work that we're doing.
Thank you.
Does anybody have any questions for the meeting?
I had one question. Are you talking 7,000 needles? Are those needles dedicated to taking drugs? Or are they, could they be diabetes needles and other things?
So generally, when an organization counts health supplies, they're not asking like what reason they're being counted.
Okay.
How many would be returned?
So that, like SAFI, so Sudway Action Center for Youth might have that information. It all depends. So most organizations don't count them specifically, like individually, but it can weigh in and come up with an average, but I don't have a number for you for this time.
I have a question about your survey. Is that survey open now?
So it's just in its final stages. We're ensuring that it's formatted properly for the internet and neighbors, so we have those copies available for all individuals. I would guess within the next month, we will see it out.
And we would get access to it through your, on your site?
Yes, and we will be promoting it through a number of media. So we'll probably promote it through social media and the newspaper posters, a number of different ways. But you know it's available, but it will link you to a website where the survey can be done online. Should you want a paper copy, we can provide you with a paper copy and an addressed envelope stamp that you can return it to as well. And all of the data will be gathered and collected at Public Health Sudry office, like our office in Sudry, and they will, so nobody will have access to this data. It will be, we will have access to the report at the end.
So I'm assuming it is open for 10 months, it should be closing probably by the beginning of December or something like that.
Yeah, as long as we get it out within the month, as long as everything goes as planned.
Is there going to be anything going forward to address his question? The reason I'm asking is because in Sudry, when I was working there, there used to be always needles around the area that I was working at. And I'm just wondering how many make it to the banks that they're supposed to throw in, like, you know? And that was a good question, I was just wondering.
Yeah, so so the individual needles are not counted per se. But we do have kiosks locally in Espinola for people to draw off any of their use supplies. And then also something that is found in the community, let's say, you dropped off that. In Sudry, for example, where they see a much larger volume of needles discarded on the ground, they have more drop-off locations that are more accessible to recover.
That seems to be working though?
They are well-used.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
You want to add part of what you're doing?
If you have a question, you will move on for the meeting. Okay, so we have a motion. It is moved by Candidacy and something by Ray Dooford, and be a result of A1, so you have to quickly continue Part One, consent agenda to be adopted. So before we discuss these, is there anything we can do about this?
Yes.
Request a server B1, please.
B1? Okay, so we'll go through the rest of the items and consent agenda. Again, if you have any questions on a specific item, you can ask the question as we go through various items. So under adoption minutes, we have the one special meeting of council, February 13, 2019. Regular meeting of council, February 13, 2019. Okay, we have a special meeting of council, February 13, 2019. We have a special meeting of council, February 19, 2019. Comments or questions on those items? Okay, so then we have three bylaws. We have a bylaw 290319, and that's the we have bylaw 290119, and that was a bylaw of the time that belonged to a taxicab agreement with the one CRCAS. And we have E3 by law number 290219, being a bylaw of the time that belonged to the emergency management program. Comments or questions on these items?
Okay, so we have, oh, sorry, just one question on the emergency management. The very last, number seven, the location of the emergency operations centers. Where are they? I didn't see an appendix where they were.
The, yeah, the emergency operation center is at the fire wall now. It wasn't in this old place. That one doesn't matter.
And that's the only one?
Well, we have, that's our main. Yeah. Thank you. Okay, for reports, we have a public works department report, January 2019. Yes.
I have a question. I saw where they had an accident between a truck and a grader. Was those our vehicle? Was the truck our vehicle or was it?
The truck was not our vehicle. It was a community, and so it's going through the process.
Okay.
Okay, F2, Leadership Services Department report, January 2019. Fire Department, Department of the Department of the 2019. Yes.
The maintenance here report that more work would have to be done to the compressor shifting states overall. What compressor is that?
That was the compressor that was donated by Dom Tarp. It was, the seals had all dried out. They can't get the parts. They called, Mr. Porres called all across Canada to try and find somebody to repair it in Canada, and they did not find anybody. So it's already been sent out to the United States to be overhauled, and it's expected back within the next couple of weeks.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, F4, the Building Services Department, January 2019. That's Council of the Assembly.
What's it do with the maintenance here, Ministry of, no longer using the Ontario Building Code, promising to use the National Building Code?
Right.
I just wanted to know, I can look it up, but sorry, the difference.
Almost nothing.
Virtually. When they do the National Building Code, they have sections for every province. There is still training that needs to be done just to make sure that there isn't anything significant, but there's not significant differences of building parties from a particular area. But they'll just be training on a new, the new code is being amended. This is a provincial decision to do that.
That was just that was discussed at the conference, okay, the Roma Conference. And I don't know, they've actually adopted those, those that they said they were going to. So the laws may not have been passed there yet to actually adopt it. But at the conference, we were told that the difference between the two is negative. Okay, not to say there's no difference, but if there are any differences, they're pretty minor.
So is the whole country going to work under one, or is it set up under one umbrella and all the problems?
Ontario is going to take the federal, whatever the other provinces do is what is up there.
Okay, thanks.
One other question, seeing that you were there. Did they say when they were going to, or that they were going to publish that at some point?
I imagine so, but they may have, it seems on the, they may be on the federal website. I don't think they're, I don't think they passed the legislation. We were told, now that's about three weeks ago. And we're at the conference or a month ago, that they were going to do that. They were thinking about doing that, okay? So it wasn't an absolute set of completely. It looked like they're going to. The law hadn't been passed, so I don't know if they passed the law.
Okay, because if you're looking for it, what I'm getting at, you have to pay to get it. And it may be on a federal website.
Unless somebody knows something. Anybody?
I just heard maybe it hasn't passed.
Okay.
I mean, there will be National Building Code, but that legislation hasn't passed.
Will it be available though to the people?
Yeah, the entire, the code is online.
Yeah.
But like I say, this hasn't been.
Okay, thanks. Thanks, Bill.
Okay. I think right up on economic department, Department of the Department of January 2019. F6, the Investment Manager Services Advisory Committee meeting minutes of January 21, 2019. F7, statements of remuneration. Okay, F8 is the Joint Health and Safety Meeting Minutes of January 3, 2019. F9 is the Management of Sudway District Services Meeting Minutes, January 24, 2019. And F10 is the Espinola Recycling Division year-end review, 2019. Okay, no other comments. All the motions will involve that item, A1 to F10. See, the item V1 contained in the Part One consent agenda to be adopted, all in favor? Okay, it's just jumping again. Okay, so we'll move on to item V1. It is moved by Council D4, seconded by Council E2. It will go with all the board of committee reports secured by receipt, and it's the Community Services Committee meeting, February 19, 2019. So Council D2, I'll turn it to you.
I'm opposed to this recommendation for hanging baskets.
Yes.
We have, we have a lot of, it's a beautification item. We have probably the number of flowers on the main dragon house. Heritage Park, Royal Bank, the town hall. When in front of Tobb's Pizza, we have pots down the street, flowers.
Can I stop you for a second? We actually don't have a motion at this meeting to approve.
We have a recommendation.
The recommendation is going to come to council at the next council meeting. I had requested, because that was something I had requested to get forward on, and I wasn't supposed to be at this meeting this evening. I had asked that this item be put onto the next meeting. So it's going to come as its own motion, not as part of the report. So the consent agenda is to
I understand the consent agenda, but if we would have approved the consent agenda with that in it, it would have passed. You say no?
Yeah, can I just, yes, okay. So we're just receiving these minutes, we're not adopting the resolution that's on those votes here, just to clarify.
I agree with that.
Okay, so we'll have that, the office meeting, you specify that item fully at the next
You should have cut me off right away.
Wow, I just wasn't quite sure where I was going. You know, it's a learning process for all of us, but so we'll keep on coming in. So I will call this motion. Be a result of all the board reading reports I have received, the emergency committee, the federal, all in favor? Okay, that motion, I think, okay. Okay, so we have item G1, it has been moved by Council F1, seconded by Council E2. Be a result of the Espinola Subway Division, the adopted in principle. And we have a show of note here to speak on that.
Thank you, Robert, Council, for the presentation opportunity. So the cycle plan was funded with a grant through the Ministry of Transportation under the Climate Change Action Plan of the province. The town of Espinola pursued the opportunity grant at the time because at the time, there was a lot of opportunities for infrastructure development. And so for bike lending stations, for equipment repair stations, parking stations, and trail development. But we learned that we, the town was ineligible for infrastructure development funding without a cycle plan in place. And so that was really what prompted us. In addition, we had recently been positioned on the trail map for the Great Lake Trail, Great Trail that connects through St. Marie, December region, and Etu La La. So we thought it was a great opportunity to capitalize on both developing our commuter cycle program and also supporting cycle tourism in Canada. So that's what led us to the creation of the cycle plan. As you could see, I'm sure, it's a formidable planning document, over 190 pages thick. And it was authored by LSI Incorporated and shared the Road Cycling Coalition, which was awarded through Le Creuset Purple. So the plan was informed through resident and stakeholder consultations, which included a survey, a telephone survey of over 300 people from different households, an online survey concluded by 94 persons, two bike rides, two focus groups, and then a community draft review session, which in total engaged over 50 community stakeholders. So the community consultations confirm a community appetite for the development of a psychoculture in Espinola. And the cycle plan has identified our strengths, one being that our urban core spans three kilometers, and Espinola can be crossed end to end in 15 minutes of a bike ride. The other tidbit that came out of it was that 16% of our population does use a bicycle or walk to the framework, which is 5.5% higher than the average in the province. So the plan has identified opportunities and some barriers to cycling, and has provided many recommendations based on provincial standards and community best practices to guide us further in developing our psychoculture. The implementation of the plan will depend on the cultivation and leadership of community partnerships to take advantage of some of the great program ideas that the consultants offered us, like bike rodeos, maintenance workshops, global rides, and bike month celebrations. Staff will continue to opportunities spot for additional funding to support infrastructure development and improve wayfiving. The best practice opportunities identified in the plan will direct us when planning for roadway improvements and enable us to take action when resources allow. With council's support and principle for the cycle plan, we will leverage our existing community assets and work towards advancing the town of Espinola as an active, safe, and healthy community, which also supports cycle tourism.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So with the plan, you're not going to necessarily have any financial commitment, but it's something that's going to be there, kind of as an overall document guiding anything going forward. If there's infrastructure money available, something that we can use to apply for that grant money, but it's not anything that requires financial commitment. Council D2?
Just have a question for Cheryl.
Sure.
Do you know if the, have that changed with the change of the government?
Yes, it did.
It's less of a thing?
Yes, yeah, significantly. As soon as the new government came into being, within two weeks, we had notifications. Some of the municipalities who actually had been granted funds through this fund, who had not yet started their project or received their funding, had to send them back. who had not yet started their project or received their funding, had to send them back. And a lot of the infrastructure opportunities have been, have been cut. But things change and this will, you know, position us in case the, the pensionists don't forget. Any other questions or comments? That's Councilor Foster.
Yeah, it looks like the way it's worded there, that it gives future councils, we don't tie anybody's hand in future councils. If for some, if let's say it suggested that we have a bike trail, we widen the road or do something like that, a future council could look at the cost of with a, with a bike lane and without and make a decision to not go ahead with bike lane depending on what the additional costs are. Or if we get a grant to do that, okay, cover the additional costs, we may go ahead and do it. So I think it's a reasonable thing to do.
Yeah, no, I have to agree. The, I think we have to do it in order to be able to obtain grants, that's what she said.
Yeah, but with a different government that might
Well, of course, it's not going to be this one perhaps, but unless they follow up their head or something.
Well, we only have it, it was done last year, correct? So the funding that had been spent, plans been developed. I can't see why it was necessary to just adopt it. Any other questions or comments? Okay, then I'll call the motion. Be a result of that, the Espinola second plan be adopted in principle, all in favor? Okay, motion is carried. Okay, and our last item is moved by Councilor Foster, seconded by Councilor McIsaac. Be a result of that bylaw, 290319, be adopted. We know by law, but part one, the code eventually, the part three, four, and plan fifty-three R twenty-one, one twenty-one, part five and six of plan fifty-three R twenty-one, uh, twenty-one, one twenty-one. And part seven and eight of plan fifty-three R one twenty-one. Okay, so I'll open the floor for discussion, so you can continue the seconding. So this item is for is for the lots that are being developed, um, these progress. Essentially, when those lots were settled, what they're, they were severed in the first time. So there have been two flats can be built on the truck or a quad flat will be built on the truck. So now, in order to finalize anything, they had to, after it was done, they have to take the survey and lose out where those walls are. And this will settle all of those lots or those lots into individual properties that can be bought and sold. But that ought to explain that case, I've been working for sure.
I wasn't, so, that's good.
Okay, is there any other questions or comments in mind? Okay, I'll call the motion, I'll be there. Okay, so we had some information that was circulated into council. The onboarding correspondence regarding all readings, mentioned by names correspondents regarding the orange funding. So Cynthia G. haven't been there yet. We're still waiting. Just that the overall pot hasn't changed, we're still waiting for unusual.
I think the government is here about the middle of March. You remember that? The Navy are all on that.
We're still waiting. There is, so how does this in conventions? Twenty nineteen, annual general meeting and annual conference was scheduled on August 18th, 2019. And Ottawa, is there any that's actually in the type of that? Have my name down. As well as the additional one for the communications one oh one.
Okay.
That was a, was that the same place around the same time, but it's a separate application? And I think Heather, she might have been interested in that one. So we'll get that tomorrow, so we'll make sure we get our reservations in early. Okay, so we're on to council. Would you want to start, council, what are you?
I don't have anything.
Okay.
I'm all the other.
Councilor Ben O'Donnell, I don't have anything, but Councilor McIsaac, we have a break, we're going to something here.
I'm going to give the floor to you.
Councilor Ben also in line will be attending that. There was a police service, it was board meeting last week. So Councilor Foster and I attended that meeting because we're on the community. And there's not too much that's coming out of that community yet. And so if there's anything that we got from DSA, we'll talk about that the next time around. I'm not, I don't have any idea. On that, I do have a meeting Wednesday night because of the DSA.
Because of DSA? Okay. So we have, for future meetings, we have our corporate services meeting on March 10. And our next regular meeting of council will be in March 12th. So that's all. So I haven't listened to adjournments, by Councilor Foster, seconded by Councilor Heding. Be a good law, the letter here, I mean, Councilor still by adjournment, all in favor?